Okay. Good evening, welcome to meeting number 10 of the South River Mayor and Borough Council. Today is June 13th, 2022. This meeting is hereby called to order. Madam Clerk.
Compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975. Notice of this meeting to be held at Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, or remotely via Zoom has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 6th, 2022, posted on the municipal bulletin board, the Borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Gindy is absent this evening. Councilman Gorchensky?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yeah.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
Council President Siola?
Here.
Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, please be seated. There are no proclamations, honors, or presentations. We are, however, going to have to go into executive session because there are a number of matters on our agenda that we are going to have to discuss and close before voting upon saying so. Madam Clerk.
Whereas Section 8 of Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances, and whereas the mayor and council of the Borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of South River in the County of Middlesex of the State of New Jersey, that the public be excluded upon the here and after specific subject matter, and that such subject matter to be so discussed is as follows: Attorney-client privilege matters, pending litigation, contract negotiations. Be it further resolved that such record of the above discussion will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required.
Your pleasure on the resolution.
Motion to go into close?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorchensky, seconded by Mr. Siola. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gorchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siola?
Yes.
Okay, we will be back as soon as we can. May I have a motion to go into open? Motion by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gorchensky. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. We are back into open. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience. We are moving on to the business portion of our meeting, which is called the Agenda Session. Councilwoman Mara had several matters that she asked to be placed on the agenda, beginning in no particular order, the Blue Acres properties. Councilwoman Mara?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had asked to be put this on the agenda because at our last, um, Shade Tree, uh, meeting, we discussed, uh, Blue Acres properties and what are the possibilities that we might be able to do, uh, rain gardens, or plant more trees in those areas, just to kind of, um, help with them not being empty lots in between, specifically the ones in between homes that are still there. Uh, I know DPW has to maintain those, um, and we're hoping that if the Shade Tree Commission can do something beneficial in those lots, uh, it would help both DPW from not having to do so much upkeep and yet let the environment grow in different ways. So, it was just something I wanted to bring up to see what your thoughts are on it, um, before going back to the Shade Tree Commission. A lot of their ideas are like rain gardens to help with flooding, uh, planting more trees, doing it in certain patterns where, you know, it takes up those spaces so that, um, we're not just mowing them, and they might be helping a little better. So, anybody have any thoughts on that? Are we able to do that? I know Blue Acres has a lot of requirements, and I'm just wondering if that's something we can take on as a project with the Shade Tree Commission.
As I understand it, we are constrained. We can't really do much of anything with it until we officially own the property, and that's when the DEP officially gives it to us. And I don't know if there's gonna come strings attached there. I mean, for example, suggestions have been made, well, can we have a picnic area? Well, yes, you could put out picnic benches out there and tables out there, but you can't put them into the ground, which is absurd, but that's it. How about if we parked a vehicle on the property? Nope, 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 can't, because some oil may spill onto the ground. So, what the conditions are going to be, I mean, I don't think anybody has any, I, you know, anything that's green-related, nobody would have any problems with it, you know, planting trees would be, uh, probably good ideas to reforest if anything that could withstand salt water, you know? But those are just my thoughts of what I know of the, uh, Blue Acres.
I just...
Mayor?
Yes.
Someone had reached out to me because, um, Saraval has put in a, um, garden on what might be Blue Acres, so I, uh, reached out to the Blue Acres program and asked them what we could put on. Still waiting for a response. Only been a month.
Okay.
Would it be okay if the Shade Tree Commission just starts brainstorming? Oh, I think specifically we were looking at lots in between homes where we have that a lot, like on Stevens Street right here, uh, we have them, you know, on Levinson, uh, you know, down those areas where there's still a lot of homes, but there are empty lots, and I think if we can do something nice to prevent people from parking on them and making it, you know, more environmentally, beautifying it a bit rather than just mowing it every week.
Yeah, I don't think anyone has an objection to, uh, to that by all means. Please.
Bruce, did Highland Park, did they use, cause they, uh, utilize rain gardens now, and they put a couple up that I went to go take a look at. Um, are they using Borough property for that, or?
In a public right of way, most of them along rare and narrow to the side streets, third, such, those rain gardens were put in there. Those are the primary ones that I know of.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had had a conversation, actually Councilman Gindy and I did, with two representatives of Blue Acres who gave us kind of a pretty thorough overview, and I can't look that up on my phone because they truncate how many emails you have, but I'll look it up tomorrow, and if you like, Mr. Landensky, I'll send you the phone numbers for both of them, and they were, I even recor, passed it along to a friend of mine. It was like that was the quickest response and the nicest people I've ever spoken to, so if you would like, I'll pass that along, so you can better vet out your questions and get solid answers. One of the women is a attorney, and she knows the environmental law as well as the Blue Acres rings, so...
Please.
I'll be happy to do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Washington Monument Cemetery?
Uh, I asked for this to be on, Mr. Mayor. I received a phone call, and actually I've gotten more than one about, I guess, people, um, who are having a hard time contacting whoever's in charge of the cemetery. I don't know how much we have over that. I know it's a cemetery, it's, I don't know if it's private or not, uh, but people were just having trouble, I guess, finishing what they had with laying people to rest or discussing their lots, and I don't know how, like, do we tax the cemetery? Like, how does that work?
As far as I know, it's a non-profit, uh, organization.
So, we don't have any say over anything?
We have nothing to say in the matter.
I will relay that message to that person. And then the last thing I had asked was, since Mr. Landensky said he would give us a small presentation on the battery storage?
Yeah. Thank you.
The, the South River Battery Storage Project consists of a 10-mil-watt battery energy storage system, which is 10 times the size of the generators down DPW, and they do that with lithium batteries. They can be remotely dispatched as needed. The project will be used for peak shaving, which reduces the Borough's peak electricity demand by using stored energy to meet part of the Borough's energy demand. This in turn creates savings through incapacity in transmission charges from PSE and G by decreasing the amount of energy the Borough uses during those high-demand times for the grid. So, basically what it does is when the company we have the contract with, their software, um, feel that's gonna be a peak demand day, uh, the peak hours are usually like 2 to 8, and they will remotely turn on the battery storage, and we will not be taking as much from public service as normal, so that they can't ramp up our fees. As you know, um, CFO myself bid the cost of electric on the grid. We've been very successful through the year of 2027?
Seventy-five percent from till 2029.
Twenty-nine.
Very good rates.
The problem is, the rate for transmission from public service keeps on going up during the, because they take six of the highest days of the year and base their fees on the transmission. So, this will reduce that usage, and there will be a substantial savings to the Borough. The firm that won the bid, um, we have a contract with them, and we get 75% of the savings, they get 25%. The cost of the project is zero to the Borough. Um, we have annual fees that we pay, but they, the fees will, uh, weigh, uh, shorter than what we expect to get in return.
And then you had mentioned that it went live already.
Say that again, please.
You had mentioned that it went live already?
Yes, June 1st.
So, but we won't see any of that, the benefits until next year?
Correct.
Okay.
But we have gotten some information that when that hit those 90 days a couple weeks ago, that there was substantial savings to the Borough as to what we were using.
Year 11, we have a savings where there's no cost, so we have savings, but the cost begins in year 1 to 10, and then year 11, from year 10's peak shaving, year 11, we save where we don't pay anything.
Yeah.
So, we can start paying first until we generate the savings next year, but then we have next year where we save and we don't pay anything.
And it's a 10-year contract, correct? So, what happens when the contract is up and we no longer want to use them? Do they...
Contract is, uh, say he, uh, dismantles the property back the way it was when we redo a contract, or we, yes, do a better updated batteries that could be, find better than what we have, so the Borough has the right to do either.
Okay.
Beautiful.
And all of their maintenance will be their, cost to them, nothing to us? Thank you. I, I just wanted that to be said because I know a lot of people feel like we've got an upgrade to our, our electrical station, substation over there, and I don't think it's an upgrade. I think they need to understand that this is something completely separate. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to ordinances, we have ordinances, uh, we only have ordinances for second reading, public hearing, so beginning with 2022-16, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Make a motion, we waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Siola, seconded by Councilman Gorchensky. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, you may come forward, please give your name and address, and you can make any comments or have any, uh, questions concerning this ordinance on first call, second call, third call. Motion has been made, move to close by Mrs. Ballas?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gorchensky. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Make a motion to move the ordinance.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Siola.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gorchensky. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gorchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siola?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 2022-19.
Bond ordinance providing for improvements to the Borough's water treatment, storage, and distribution system, appropriating $950,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $100,000 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the costs thereof, authorized in and by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Siola to waive the full reading, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, you may come forward, please give your name and address. You can ask any questions or make any comments concerning this ordinance on first call, second call, third call.
Motion, close public?
Motion has been made to close public by Mr. Siola, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Make a motion to move the ordinance.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Siola.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gorchensky. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gorchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siola?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 2022-20, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 72 entitled Public Safety Department of...
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Siola.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gorchensky. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, you can come forward, please give your name and address. You may ask any questions or make any comments concerning this ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike Icharski. I reside in Monroe Township. I am, uh, the president of the Superior Officers Association of the PBA. Mr. Mayor, I know that you weren't here two weeks ago, but I spoke to the council president, uh, that evening regarding this ordinance, and I expressed that the majority of the SOA does not support this ordinance as it is written. We totally support the deputy chief's position, and we would like the deputy chief's position to be reestablished. Mr. Mayor, as you're aware, at the end of 2021, the deputy chief's position was eliminated. Reasons that we were given were financial, it was that we didn't need the position anymore, uh, it was never gonna be filled. As you could imagine, as we sit here today, six months later, we question all those excuses that were given to us. We question them all. Uh, we cannot believe them for the sole reason we're here today. We're here discussing this ordinance again today. However, we're discussing a very radical, uh, different ordinance, not only the reemergence of the deputy chief's position, but a position that undercuts the whole rank structure of the police department. As I had mentioned two weeks ago, this ordinance does not improve morale, does not improve morale. Prior ordinances regarding promotions to sergeant, lieutenant within a police department, whether it be the SOA, PBA, or command staff, input was always asked as to those ordinances or, I'm sorry, as to those processes. Know how much input was asked by the SOA and PBA regarding this? This, this radical ordinance where you can bypass a lieutenant, or you can be a lieutenant for two years and not even be eligible to take the test, uh, for deputy chief because a sergeant can bypass you? Know how much input we were given or asked?
About to find out.
Nothing. Not one shred of input. With that being said, the PBA and SOA reached out to the Public Safety Committee, hoping to get our point across. We sat there for, on June 3rd, for about an hour and a half, expressing all our concerns, and we believe that they were very legitimate and detailed for those of you that were there. Unfortunately, we're sitting here today with this ordinance in front of us, uh, most likely because you have the votes to pass it. Unfortunately, it looks like our voices were being ignored. Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you remember, uh, about almost 20 years ago, there was a show on TV called Shame on You. We had Arnold Diaz running through our back parking lot, chasing members of the police department, questioning them about fake degrees that they received during a promotion process. Promotion process which was designed to carve out and eliminate promotions, carve out and eliminate, uh, positions for some, eliminate positions for others. That same process is in front of you right here. This ordinance, 2022-20, maybe a little bit more polished, but you are carving out positions for some and eliminate opportunities for other. And I hope you really take a time to look at this. I know nothing about the scoring of this ordinance. You're voting on this today, I hope you guys do. These are some serious questions that I have, and I don't have any answers. So, you have this ordinance in front of you. I'm hoping that you reconsider it. I'm asking the members of the Public Safety Committee to please listen to our voices, do not try to silence us. We speak based upon experience with this agency. We don't just, we're not just up here speaking based upon self-serving motives. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time. I'm asking you please reconsider this ordinance and not pass it as it is written. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Paul Mazinski, 1241 North Indian Place, North Brunswick. Uh, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Paul, uh, and I am the PBA president for PBA Local 62. Um, I recently asked our members, out of the 18 people, um, I've asked, I asked if they were against or for, or they would abstain their vote on how this ordinance is written. Uh, 17 out of 18 members are against this, uh, and the 18th member abstained their vote. So, I think those are shocking to, to show how much, um, this matters on our end, um, and we stand by, uh, our SOA president and the SOA. Um, I'm just asking you to reconsider and to really look into this. Um, I know that the vote's tonight, um, but again, that's what I'm asking, so thank you for your time.
Good evening, Kevin Nielsen, Longmont, Sello Way. Um, I wish Mr. Gindy was here tonight because, uh, I would like to ask him, when they pulled this ordinance, he said there, there was no reason for it. We don't need this position. But now, it's been reinstated, and like Lieutenant said, you're undermining the lieutenants to get somebody's friend who's probably a sergeant, and that's what this does. I said it that night, and I'll say it again. This is an ordinance designed to take care of someone who we can't take care of the way the ordinance is written now. And I guarantee you, if we went to these guys, piece of paper envelope, sealed them, stamped them, the day after, it would all be the same name, and I could probably give you the name too. And it's a shame. It's a travesty that every time somebody needs to get promoted, they screwed over Walters and Nikovich and Schaefer, they had to sue. Then they came out with the fake college degrees, and those guys that got screwed over had to sue. And now these guys are gonna get screwed over, and what are they gonna have to do? They're gonna have to sue. And what is it? I think the offer you guys are throwing out there now is like $50,000 for people to shut up and go away in your lawsuits? That's what I'm hearing from people who have lawsuits coming against the Borough, you guys are offering like 50 grand. I don't know, is that worth it for you guys? Is 50 grand enough to walk away? Wouldn't shouldn't be. They put their lives into this, and you people come up here to take care of a friend and just step all over these individuals. And it's not just the lieutenants, it's the guys underneath them, because if these new guys see that this is how we're gonna be treated in the future, why stay here? Cause you're gonna give your life to it, you're gonna do the best that you can, you're gonna get to a position, and if you're not liked by the guy that's sitting in his chair at that time, you're screwed. It might happen in other towns, in other counties, but you're gonna get more money, and that's all that counts in the end towards your pension, so. You're not here longer than five years, start putting out applications elsewhere. Who's gonna be on this? The chief, you, and you, correct?
I could, I and I have the option to re, to vacate my position and assign it to someone else.
And who would that be? Is there a, a protocol that who that individual has to be, or is it gonna be Ms. Mira, Mr. Olivera, Mr. Siola, Ms. Ballas? Is it somebody on the council, or who does that go to?
Personally, I would prefer someone in law enforcement too, because like I said, we don't really know the architecture of the police department, the abilities and the skills of the men.
Then why are you in the ordinance? You shouldn't even be in the ordinance. You just admitted, you don't know nothing about how a police department is run. Why are you two gentlemen in that ordinance? Or whoever sits in your seat at the time?
Well, that's the way the ordinance was written, and, you know, like I said, like...
You wrote it!
This was given to us, you know, I would have, the old ordinance as it was rescinded would have been fine, but like I said, the, uh, public safety...
Then vote no!
Pardon?
Then vote no! Vote no on it. If the old ordinance, you just said, Jim, the old ordinance was fine, and now you're putting in one where you and our, no disrespect, gentlemen, have no understanding about what it's like to be a law enforcement officer in the 21st century. And yet, these men are gonna look to you two to make a decision on who runs this place when you're gone. And with all the lawsuits down, it ain't being run that great right now!
I don't understand it. I was in the military, like you, well, you know that.
Yeah.
But the thing is too, and I understood the architecture there, like I said, this based on a completely different thing, um, public safety had no knowledge of the ordinance being rescinded. And like I said, it was a bad decision at the time, and we're just trying to rectify it now, and we will modify it later on.
You all voted yes to rescind it, so if you didn't know, why did you vote to rescind it?
We didn't have any knowledge. At the time, we thought it was discussed prior to, but...
Would you, you were in the military, would you open a, a canister that you didn't have any knowledge of what was inside if you're on the battlefield?
Usually you have enough insight to know if it's explosive or not, or anything detrimental. Yeah.
But you voted to get rid of something, and you just admitted that you didn't know what the hell you're getting rid of. It was good enough.
Yeah, it was a bad decision, I'm sorry.
It was! It's a bad decision, and you can rectify that decision tonight by voting no and putting a deputy chief in position with the way the ordinance was written. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Sorry, ladies.
Anyone else on first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close public?
Motion has been made by Mr. Siola to close public.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gorchensky. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Move the ordinance, please.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gorchensky.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siola. Discussion.
I've got a few questions, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Uh, public safety, what, what did you all benefit from the meetings that you had with PBA and SOA? Chairman?
Well, prior to the meeting that we had, there were three other meetings that just never transpired. And if we would have known it, and there was a discussion beforehand and everything, possibly it would have been changed.
Well, it is beforehand, cause we haven't voted on it yet, so, um, but what did you, what valuable information did you get from PBA and SOA this time around?
They requested that the position be reinstated. And like I said, we didn't have anything with the architecture as far as it goes, because we don't know the architecture of the police department as far as promotions and everything else goes. That's completely their policy.
Okay, but...
We don't make their policy. They have a code of conduct and standards that they have to abide by.
At the last meeting, I had asked how this got back on the agenda. Everybody was shocked. The chief said that he asked for it to be put on. You said you guys had met regarding it. So, before first reading, you had knowledge of this coming back on to the agenda? So before first reading, you had knowledge of this coming back on to the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We just heard that the last time we, some people voted, they had no knowledge of it, but yes, yet they still voted to get rid of it? Now we're back on it, and we're seeing issues with it again. How many times are we going to have this before us without people properly doing their homework on an ordinance? Does nobody see the concern from the department?
We recognize the concern, and like I said, it was a mistake in removing it at first. That's why we're instituting it with the option to modify it later on, as need be.
Are we going to keep modifying our ordinances as we see fit because we don't do our homework beforehand? That's a concern I have. I, I voted not to get rid of this last time. It's back on again. My concern are the same issues. This department needs a little more communication within each other. They need to know, you know, they know better than us, I believe. Like you said, you're the chair of the Public Safety Committee, and you might not even sit in on this? How do we know that's going to be your final decision? Who are you going to appoint? Does nobody have these concerns? Public Safety should not be a partisan issue. And at the last meeting, the concern was this has become a political issue. Does nobody else see that concern as well? It was mentioned at the last meeting. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you watched the last meeting or not.
No. How is this a public, uh-
Well-
How has this become part of-
The three people who get to interview the position are the chief, the business administrator, and the chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Right.
That seat over there is a political appointment. This is a politician. Do we not see the concern?
Yes, but that goes through the ages, through, no matter who is in charge. I mean, the chief's position, everybody up here. We're supposed to be doing our best.
With the concerns you heard today, are we doing our best? Do you feel we're doing our best?
I'm going to find out. If we had all six, I don't know. I don't know how everybody's going to vote. But at this point in time, hurt, listen to what they had to say. We are now the managers. We have to put in our management caps, and we have to decide how we're going to vote. This was recommended to us from the Public Safety, so I assume that it's going to go through.
We need a policy. And like I said, we can modify it at a later date. I'm not going to review the men's qualifications, or their personnel file, or anything else. That's priv, priv, excuse me, privileged information.
So then how are you going to decide who becomes the next deputy chief if you don't revise any of that information?
Other questions probably go ahead, the interview board. Or the test.
Six months ago, we were told people were cleaning up ordinances. It didn't even come through Public Safety. How come the Public Safety Committee didn't have any input on that one, but this time they're aware of what's coming through? I'm just saying, very lack of communication between everyone and their committees and what they decide, you know? You all are up here to make your own decisions for the better welfare of the borough, but these are people's jobs, their employment, where they have to come to every day. We're here once every three weeks, making decisions for how they're going to work every day, or what kind of environment they're going into, so.
That's our job.
So take it seriously. We should be doing our homework, not say that we don't know how the process is.
You're the one who complained the last time that said that, well, the Public Safety Committee should have been involved. Well, now they're involved. Now you're complaining again.
The Public Safety Committee just said they didn't even know how, how the process works. They're just, they just got what, what was put in front of them. How is that doing our homework? When we just removed something six months ago? We're not even talking about a year. Six months ago, you said, "We don't need this," and now it's back?
Yes.
And now you want to bypass people's rankings, how they work?
What's wrong with having a bigger pool?
We didn't have the money six months ago. All of a sudden, we need-
We still don't have the money.
We still don't have the money, so why are we putting the position back in?
It was suggested that the position was put back into place, and it had remained dormant for quite a few years.
Mr. Zenga, do we have the money for the position?
There's not enough out there right now with everything going on.
Savings there could pay for the deputy chief position. Now, when it comes to public safety, you don't know what's going to happen during the year. I mean, it could be something serious that happens where overtime's through the roof. Last year's budget, overtime was ex, was, plus acting pay was extreme, more than anticipated in 2021. As we're going right now, we're okay. In a month or so, who knows what happens? Public Safety, it's a lot of moving parts that make up the budget.
If you guys see fit that what you're doing is correct, go ahead. I just, there was not enough homework done. You see the concerns, they came before you, the committee actually met, and you still ignore what they say?
May I?
Yes, please.
No one is ignoring what they say. I sat through the meetings with the gentleman there. We sat with the chief. My concerns is I get the ranking personally, and I'm going, this is just my personal opinion, it has nothing to do with anybody else up here. I don't like rank jumping. Sorry. It should be in order. The people that will, if this goes through, deciding who the next deputy chief is, should have some police background. That's what they do. I know at my job, I'm not allowed to tell my accountant at work what to do. I have no accounting degree. I am asked to do my job, and I do my job in the order that I am assigned to. So we did have our meeting, and regardless of whether people think this is political, which I take offense to, I don't sit here saying that I'm going to vote for something because I want to do somebody a favor. And none of you should do that either. And none of you should assume that somebody's friend is going to become the next deputy chief. So, in my heart of hearts, I am going to vote the way that I feel that this should go on. I am not 100% sure of pieces of this ordinance. That's what I have to say.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Andrea? With this ordinance, if it's passed tonight, there's, as Joe was saying, limited funds to hire a deputy chief. Can amendments be made to this ordinance within the next few months to revise it, to bring it back to where the old ordinance was, and go from there?
Yeah, if that's the will of council, you can always amend your ordinances.
You can amend that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Because the way I heard it was, they're all in favor of a deputy chief. Just the way it was written, they're a little bit on the up and up. So, okay, thank you.
That's why I reiterated too, in a particular session, that the ordinance can be modified at a later date. It may not even be filled at this particular time. We don't know, but there is a need for it, just to be on the books. It had been dormant for several years and everything like that too, and it may be, it may become dormant right now. But there is a need for the good of the department and the borough to have something on the books at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
So is the Public Safety not all on the same page for this, or?
You're about to find out. Anyone else? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
As this ordinance is written, no.
Councilman Gurchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
No.
Councilwoman Olivera?
No.
Council President Seula?
Tied with everything here?
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't matter with either way, because I'm just going to say no and agree with everybody else.
The ordinance is not adopted. Moving on to 2022-21. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Move the way for a reading?
Motion by Mrs. Ballas.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Seula. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, this concerns new stop signs. You can come forward, please give your name and address. Ask any questions, make any comments on first call, second call, third call. Motion by Mrs. Ballas to close.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Seula. All in favor?
Aye.
Wake up, people.
Aye, I'm still reading stuff here. Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
The ordinance?
Seconded.
Ordinance has been moved by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Seula. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gurchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to reports. Mr. Koch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. The 2020 roadways are complete except for punch lists. The 2020 roadways, 2021, I misspoke, I apologize. The water work will, the connection, the final water main connection will be made tomorrow. There will be a water main shutdown. A notice was handed out on Friday. And the one auto flusher is in place, not in place, delivered, and will be installed on Wednesday. The auto, the other auto flusher, we're still waiting for delivery on. With regard to the DOT 2022 local aid program, the borough received that grant. You've authorized us to do the design, and we are working away on that. 2023, the DOT is currently accepting applications for the 2023 aid program. Touch to my memo is a copy of their formal announcement with all of the programs. The deadline for submission is July 1st. On May 16th, I issued a letter with six roads in it. The applications only allow for three roads to be filled in. This letter was a combination of input from Mr. Soares and myself as we drove around from, and looked at a list that was previously compiled. So I'm asking if you can give me your choices for those three roads so that we can move that application along for you and get it submitted in time.
We spoke about the three streets, which would have been Leonardine from OBT to Grand, Prentice from Willett to Sheldon, and then Garwood.
I don't think they had Garwood on there.
Garwood is where PSCNG ripped it up and never fixed it.
Okay, so, so two of the three, two of the six from this list, and then Garwood?
Yeah, there's, Garwood was on that list, I thought.
It might be Quinn Place, because looking it over-
Yeah, Quinn Place from Garwood to Daley.
Quinn Place to Garwood or some, yeah, in that area there.
Okay.
He's right.
Okay. If that is it, I will move forward with that. DOT also announced the Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Program. That is for a variety of different things. I also attached a copy of that to this. That, that is due much later in the year. No, no urgency on that one. But something to keep in touch. The substation maintenance is done, other than some minor punch list items, and the well number two replacement, the well is constructed and complete. The DEP issued the water allocation permit, and the permit to operate is pending. Once that permit comes in, you'll be able to use the well. And that is it.
Any questions for Bruce?
I had a question for Bruce. The alternative, the DOT alternative, um, what is that, bike ways? Would something like the Rails to Trails be a program for that, like?
I, I think it's similar to that, yes. We, I was trying to think of projects, and I remember we had that design, but over the years, I think that, that whole railway right-of-way there has become much wetter, and, and safety was a concern as well in terms of people's safety being back there. So that project was tabled.
Okay. Is there any way to implement something like that in trying to improve our riverfront? See, I'm unfamiliar with the Rails to Trails from way back when.
Mm-hmm.
I was like still in high school when that came out. But I was wondering if something like that would be able to be implemented in that type of grant?
I think something like that could. I, I think that it's open to pedestrians, alternative means of transportation, things of that nature. I just don't know how viable of a project we would be able to come up with.
And you-
Because of the environmental constraints with all, with the time that has passed.
Okay. How would we know that, though?
It depends. If you're talking about a walkway along the river, I think it's going to have its challenges, or it could be damaged frequently due to storms, or high water.
Okay. Because I've, I've heard, we, we see a lot, that a lot of the pathways by the river are man-made right now, and people like to take those trails. I'm wondering if there's a way for us as a borough to get grant money to be able to improve that?
I would say you probably could. I will just again mention that when you do that, and, and, you know, the chief would probably be a better person to get this input from, but when you create that, then you're inviting people there. And does that make it a challenge to provide a safe environment off the beaten path like that? That's all. If it was going to be something formal with lighting and such, then perhaps that would be the case, but we have plenty of time to talk about it. I think it's well worth it. You have the beachfront down there, you know, the, on the river to make access to from the field, but just don't know what the governing bodies, you know, what your desire would be in terms of that, and then an application could be made.
Governing body?
Could something like that be used to connect Daley's pond around? The Portuguese flag raising, looking it over, in other words, to do something so that you wouldn't cross over those, that businesses' parking lot?
A bridge, and then improve it around the pond in order to provide more access for people to do recreation.
Where the bulkhead is?
Yeah.
I don't know, you can't really do anything on top, but you know how that other bridge is on the other side?
Yes.
Maybe the same kind of thing?
Yeah, that's what I talked about years ago, is just putting a bridge over it so that you're not mounting anything to it, or even looked at doing a cantilever off of that one wall so that you'd have something-
Just walk straight across then. And then the other thing that was brought up also is where the walkway is in front of the flag and where the gazebo is and all of that, to widen that walkway to make it like a, a rounded area where if-
Almost like a courtyard?
Yeah, where if, you know, they wanted to do a presentation, or the- Yeah, where if, you know, they wanted to do a presentation, or the younger kids were doing a dance, if they could do something right there instead of being pushed up into a gazebo or on the grass or something like that.
That seems like a viable project.
Within that grant?
I'd have to read it more thoroughly, because when I did, I was thinking of what you were thinking about, but I'd be happy to look closer at it and see what I think, if it would... I know it's competitive, but it's up to you if you want to try it. And just filling out an application, coming up the estimates, giving them whatever they need is part of that, so.
I just think it would give more use to that.
Daley's Pond's used a lot with flag raising and other ceremonies.
Well, not even that, even at the flag raising, we watched people walk around, and then they had to go all the way to that parking lot and come all the way back through and then go that way, so that access would make it a lot simpler.
You probably could even do it on top of the bulkhead. Working with the owner to bring it, it already comes up to the entrance, to the parking lot. If you just made it around with the bulkhead, say, on your left side, and just have the path walk around, and then come out into the parking lot of Daley's Pond. All you'd have to probably do is just push the driveway for the business over a little bit. Move a telephone pole, it wouldn't be that difficult. All right, give me a call tomorrow on that.
I will.
Those little gray cells are moving around. Okay, anyone else? Bruce? Mr. Zanga, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you. Three items on the agenda. The first one is you have a Chapter 159 for a Clean Community Grant. This money was received after the budget was adopted, so this will be able to put the money into the 2022 budget. You have a resolution for emergency repairs to the ladder tower for $34,000. Since it exceeds our bid threshold of 17.5, a resolution needs to be done. You also have a resolution for a prescription renewal for two years. Year one is a 4% increase, and year two will be up to a 4% increase. Most likely, it still will be 4%, but it's a possibility it could be less. That's it.
Anyone for Mr. Zanga? I see we have our fire chief here. Do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. All units are currently in service with the exception of our rally. We do have a serious electrical issue that needs to be repaired immediately before we have a catastrophe. This weekend, we will be going to the academy, we'll be going to Somerset Fire Academy from 8 till 12. Immediately following that, we'll be involved in South River Day. After that weekend, we'll start working on our annual refreshers, annual training, and also getting our engines and our hose and our wires re-served.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Soares, DPW?
Saturday, June 25th, we're having a paper shred event down at the Public Works Yard. From 9:00 a.m. to 12:00, we're until the truck is filled. Residents may bring a maximum of five file boxes or up to 100 pounds, no plastic bags. Residents must stay in their vehicles and have materials in the trunk cargo area or truck bed. That staff will remove from the vehicle. Monday, July 4th, will be closed. There'll be no grass and fresh pick-up.
Anyone for Mr. Soares?
I just, quick, I know we had a problem with our recycling men the other day. I also noticed that, again, and this is their rule, not ours, they're picking who they're gonna take their plastic bags from. Because now I got some calls, they took my neighbors and didn't take mine. Is there any way to sit with these people and tell them to make up their minds? It's ridiculous now. But this is their rule, and we're getting the phone calls. They need to pick a side. Either get rid of the plastic bags, or don't pick them up. But don't pick up one side and then pick up the other. Because then they're going, well, that's your company, it's not my company. So there's no way to tell them to... I just don't get it. They're the ones that started this whole thing, and they're not abiding by their own rule.
I have a question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Adriana, do we still have bags that we're allowed to give to our residents, the reusable bags? We still have some left? Another question that I get often that I'm not sure of the answer is, what are people allowed to drop off at the recycling center on Saturdays? No, like, no, but no electronics? You are...
Yes, electronics, yes.
Okay. Okay. For some reason, I thought that was one of the hazardous waste ones for pickup? Oh, you need that? Is it on?
On Saturdays.
Okay. And my last question that I got from a resident, and I had spoken to you, so I don't know if the governing body has to decide. I had a resident on Main Street recognize that a lot of the trees on that little bridgeway by where Dittmans used to be are overgrowing by the sidewalk, and a lot of the kids and stuff that walk on the street over there, it's getting really tight because there's a phone pole, so a lot of them have to dip out onto the street. Is it possible for us to trim that, not knowing that if that's ours or not?
We did that already.
You did?
Yes.
On the Dittman side?
Both sides.
Okay.
Who are out on Monday?
Today?
Last week.
Trim the trees, I see, yeah.
Yeah, we went out there and just did it real quick, because if we gotta wait for Conrail, we'd be waiting for months.
Yeah.
Speaking of Conrail, are they gonna ever come and clean that railroad track down by the cemetery? No?
No.
Didn't even have to think about it.
It's horrible, there's big...
Didn't even have to think about it.
But there's tire, I mean, it's disgusting. There's...
We've tried in the past, they don't come out. They don't even answer the phone half of the time, so.
I'm gonna jump on one of those trains and go all the way to North Brunswick. It goes from North Brunswick to Amboy, right? I'm gonna go, where's their leader? Are they in North Brunswick over there? Get on the train and just follow it out?
I think it's like a 1-800 number or something, we call.
Actually, there is a number on their website, but you're right, nobody answers.
Nobody answers. We tried it already.
Anyone else?
I just want to also just thank Donna Stoddard, if you can, when you get back to work tomorrow. She did help out with the Shade Tree Commission on getting us the plants. And I was gonna save it for my comments, but the Shade Tree Commission did go out and plant in a bunch of places, down on Main Street and in that little pocket park by the firehouse, so just want to thank her for helping us out getting those, and thank the Shade Tree Commission for spending their time out there.
Anyone else? Chief?
Good evening, Mayor. Can you, everyone hear me? All right, I got a couple things on the agenda. First and foremost is the new stop signs. They've been working well, the old stops, the stop signs that we've been putting up. We plan on doing them every Wednesday, putting these stop signs up, Devote Darrell, Will Cox and Darrell, and Alborn and Corman. Just to let you know, I was up north visiting my daughter up in Lodi, and in a residential area, they have four-way stop signs everywhere, so it will curtail speeding. So I know there's all these different complaints about people going through these stop times, stop signs. It's gonna take some time, because muscle memory, a lot of the residents in town, including myself, who doesn't live in town, has slowly gone through one of those stop signs on Leonard Dean, so it will take some time, but it's there to serve a purpose. I think this is a better option than doing the rumble strips and the speed bumps as well. My other thing that I have is the conditional offer of appointment that we gave to Daniel Osceello Jr. as a police officer. He graduated from the Atlanta County Police Academy last Wednesday as an alternate route cadet. So he is fully police training commission certified, so he will start next Monday. There's just a couple things that he has to go through, a psychological, a medical, and a drug screen. So we will get him here starting next Monday, and the ceremonious appointment, we will also do on the same day that we are doing the ceremony for the promotion of Sergeant Pinto, which will be next Wednesday, 6:22 at 2:30 p.m. here.
So you're right, Mayor.
Okay, and then the last thing I have with the deputy chief's position. I take offense to people saying that I was gonna promote somebody that was my friend. That's, I don't know where that's coming from. The old ordinance that we have, just so you know, we never promoted anybody off that old ordinance. That ordinance was changed back in 2006, 2007, and we never promoted anyone off of there. So I did my homework in trying to find an ordinance that's fair for everyone. I can only make recommendations. I don't make the laws. So this ordinance that we had that was before you was, I believe, was a fair process. Instead of me just picking, I'm being accused of, you know, picking my friends. So now the old ordinance, if you want to go back to the old ordinance, I just pick. So I don't know how that's any better from what they're saying. So I guess, you know, when we put that old ordinance up there again, they'll be back. So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Oh, they'll be back, all right. Every little problem. Anything for the chief?
I have a quick question, Chief. Did you guys do the bike raffle yet?
I have to find out if it wants to.
I believe they did.
They did?
Yes.
I ask my kids every day, but they never know, so I just...
I ask my kids questions every day, they don't answer.
Madam Clerk? Is there anything else for the chief? No? Madam Clerk?
Just a few things.
The election went off okay?
Yep, that's what I was gonna report on. The primary election was last week. 697 votes were cast, which is a 7.54% voter turnout. We had 14 districts in four different locations. I just want to thank all the poll workers. Everything went very smoothly, and without them and their diligence with the new polling books. We went to electronic poll books this year, which was a little challenging, but they made it through. The other thing is, we received a liquor license transfer application last week for the Acapulco Tropicana. It's been sent to ABC and police for background check, and there are two more transfers in the works. So they'll be appearing on future agendas as soon as they're cleared. That's it.
When will we find out the final tally of the votes?
I believe they put out an unofficial results. I can send that to you if you like.
All right, and when is the official results?
I don't think they can do official until the end of June sometime, because they have to do like the overseas, the mail-ins, all that.
If you could send out the unofficial, appreciate it.
Of course.
Okay, anything as far as legal is concerned?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
I have one question, though.
Yes.
Quickly. I don't know if we need an ordinance, and maybe the chief can help and age to put in a no parking zone on Division. There's a strip of Division Street that I don't think there should, it's right in front of the pantry. Right before you come to the curve.
Yes.
There now are four cars parking there and a work truck.
Yes.
So when you're driving down Division, you're all the way this way, so when the people are coming around the curve, coming up...
At a high speed.
No C.
I defer to the chief. Yes, if we were to do that, we would do it via ordinance, but the chief has a traffic patrol that can, I would say, look at that.
We'll take a look at it, but like I said, we only, we'll make the recommendation.
Okay, because it's getting, you can actually somewhere on the curve, up and down, a couple of near, near...
Near misses.
Yes.
So it's on Division Street in front of Pantry One?
From Division off of Willett, right in front of Pantry, to their driveway exit or entrance on Division.
Right on a bend, Mark.
Okay.
From Stanton to Willett.
I feel like that used to be no parking anytime.
It used to be.
But there's no yellow now, there's no sign.
No signs anymore, yeah.
It might have been back in the day when there was a business there, that there was, because they had trucks coming out of that at one time. But now it's, but it's a little dangerous, so I just wanted to check on that.
I think the first thing to do is go check if it was at one time, it may still be, the signs may have only disappeared.
But, yeah, but they need to do the yellow too, because then people, in this, you know, sometimes they don't pay attention to the sign.
Have the traffic safety look at it. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, that's all, thank you.
Progress, Mayor. Progress, very good, then. Okay, council reports. He did, progress, we're having progress. Councilwoman Mara?
I actually had a question for Art before I did my comments, but Art, I know you're in the construction department. We did hire that new part-timer that's supposed to help out several departments. Will that part-timer also be helping the construction department?
Yes, we've offered her a few times, and right now, the technical assistant said she doesn't need any help.
Well...
The auditor's coming in, he just gave the list of permits. She's the technical assistant, pull the permits soon.
I've understood all of that, but the construction department, when everybody has a... I'm gonna, yeah, I'll be very unspecific. I know all of our employees have certain rights to be able to take off when needed. I just thought that a lot of the administrative positions that we had were supposed to alleviate a lot of the times when people are away. And I know this one's new, but even the prior position, I thought, was supposed to alleviate with all departments? Is that the intention of our part-timers?
Yes.
Department two, when she's away, she's gonna help do scheduling, the part-timer's gonna help schedule stuff, and the department's gonna keep moving public, even with the technical assistants off.
Okay, because right now, it's not.
Well, she just started, she's been here five days, so she doesn't know...
I'm not specifically speaking, yeah, I'm not specifically speaking on the new position, I'm just saying. And way back when, I think even two years ago, when we hired certain positions, when we made it administrative, I thought it was to help alleviate with a lot of the departments, and I feel like people get stuck in one certain thing, and when people go away or take off or take vacation, it's...
All she'll be helping pull the permits for the construction code, and then she's gonna be trained how to take permits, you know, like how to schedule everybody, like Patty does right now.
But my question wasn't just specifically to that one, I'm saying with the other ones that we have hired, is that the intention to help alleviate with all departments or not? Administratively.
Construction, the clerk's office, the finance office, administration, whenever someone's in need, queue up that department.
Okay. Just, just a question. That's all I have. Do you want me to do my department, my comments, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, it's the time of the agenda.
I don't have anything for the library yet, because we haven't met, but just be aware that all their great summer programs are starting to come out, and they came out with a nice little passport book for the kids with all the programs and events and things that they can get done at the library. So when you have a chance, please stop at the library. And again, with the Shade Tree Commission, just thanking our volunteers or our members that helped plant a lot of the plant in the downtown. They are very excited and wanting to help improve our borough, as I said before, with the Blue Acres property, so hopefully we'll have good ideas coming before the council with that. And that's all I have for now with my committee's things.
Very good. Mr. Kuchenski?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have to report is on the Office of Aging, they have many events that are coming up, and to please check your calendar. There are many that require pre-registration, and there might be a minimal fee and everything to follow through on it. But like again I said, check your calendars and everything, and we offer a lot to the seniors, and hopefully they'll have a nice one. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Olivera.
Parks and Rec, there's two summer activities coming up, Summer Rec. We already have over 120, uh, children signed up, and then we are now offering a youth agility class that will be held in the park for ages 10 to 18, that will run from July 6th to July 29th. I want to congratulate our U7 baseball team. They have made it to the championship game for U7 baseball. And then I also want to congratulate our A U and softball and our T-ball teams on a successful spring season. Some of you guys may have seen, uh, the Parks and Rec Department has put out a survey through JotForm that can be found on Facebook. We're going to try to put it on the Borough website as well, just to try to get some insight on different activities that the borough may need. So please make sure you fill that out. Board of Ed, they have a meeting coming up on June 23rd. I'll be able to report more at the next meeting, but we do have two student liaison positions open for the 22, 23 academic year. So if it's something you're interested in, please let us know. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Cecilia?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have is our EDC. We haven't met yet this month. We're meeting on the 22nd, and I believe we have a couple contractors coming to give us a presentation on what they'd like to start on Main Street. That's it, Mayor.
Very good. Mrs. Palace?
Just a reminder that this Saturday is South River Day on Montgomery Street from 12 to 5. If you want to look on their website for the cultural arts and heritage, they do have a list of what's, there's food trucks and games and a petting zoo. So bring out your kids. It's gonna, the weather looks like it's going to be beautiful. The South River Food Bank is running a school supplies drive. All items that are donated will be distributed to families in South River via the food bank. Donateable items such as binders, notebooks, folders, plastic or paper, pencils, pens, highlighters, backpacks. These are not just, this is not just a list of suggestions. You can, there is no limit to them. The dates you can donate at the food bank are Tuesday from 8:30 to 10 AM, or 5:30 to 6:30, Wednesday 8:30 to noon, and Saturday from 1 to 3. If there's any questions, you can get in touch with Beth at 732-322-8623. And to the Human Relations Commission, very nice job on the Portugal flag raising this past weekend. It was very well attended. The dancers were just cute. And, but the town really came out for it, and I'd like to thank them for all the work they did on that. And that's all I have.
Okay. I missed the last meeting, and since then, there's a number of things. I've been receiving anonymous letters, people complaining about various things. I will, I can't respond, except through here, but I can just tell you that for Ann Street, we are working on quieting the park. You know, after hours, people complain about that. We're working on removing the obnoxious trucks that are on the road, the ones that are too big. That's also being worked on. Thank you for the pictures for that. Just to let you know a little bit about what goes on behind the scenes. I put my name to a letter that was requested from the League of Municipalities. And what it basically says is, it's addressed to members of the legislature, and it's from, they're asking all the mayors to sign it. "We, the undersigned mayors, strongly support Assembly Bill and Senate Bill, which increases the distribution to municipalities from the Energy Tax Receipts Property Tax Relief Fund. Restoring funds to municipalities and urge you to pass such legislation before the state budget break." The legislation provides for a two-year phased-in restitution of the $331 million, which has been annually diverted from the dedicated municipal funding programs, the Energy Tax Receipts Property Tax Relief Fund, and the Consolidated Municipal Property Tax Relief Act. During state fiscal years 2009, 2010, and 2011, this funding was diverted from towns to address state budget accounts. Ever since those dedicated revenues have not been distributed to the municipalities, as drafted, the legislation would eventually bring funding for all municipalities back to the 2008 levels. And this is what I love. Taxes on gas and electric utilities were originally collected by the host municipalities, and when the state made itself the collection agent for these taxes, it promised to return the proceeds to municipalities for property tax relief. Yeah, right. And they kept it. They just kept the money. They, it's like, oh, well. So, that's your state government working for you. We're trying, for years, go to conference, League of Municipalities, the mayor's conventions, constantly begging the legislature, please give us the money that you designated that we're supposed to have, and we don't get it. So, Mr. Zanga told you, $34,759.19 is going to do an emergency repair to our ladder tower truck. It's worthwhile because how much is it going to cost to replace it?
As of right now, 1.8, 1.9 million.
Yeah, almost $2 million to replace that ladder truck, so, well. I said I didn't do a state of the borough address. Figured I'd break it down into bits and pieces. Today, I just want to address, you know, the electric utility. South River has owned its own electric utility from the days of the Great Depression. Up until 1972, the borough made its own electric. After that, the borough purchased electric in bulk. At one time, we used to just go next door. PSE&amp;G provided it, and we'd buy it from them. Then the state said, well, you can go out and get your electric from other companies, like Delmarva, which as the name sounds, is the Delaware, Maryland, Virginia electric utility. They produce it. We can buy it from them. We can buy it from Niagara, where their power comes from Niagara Falls. We can do that, and it's a great thing. Competition, good. Prices went down. You still have to get it to the town. Guess who's next door, who we have to pay transmission fees? PSE&amp;G. And as you heard, their price can skyrocket. Over the years, surpluses from the electric utility would be moved to what is called the current fund in the town budget. It was and is a way to lower property taxes. We're still doing that today to the tune of over $3 million. This is why our electric rates are higher than surrounding towns. This is why if you install electric panels, you're reimbursed at the lower rate. I've tried over the years to wing the town's dependence on the electric utility. I have put $50,000 more into the current fund so that it takes less out of the electric. As former councilman Ryan Jones said, "This will take forever," and he was right. It's going to take about 60 years to finally get it down, but it took all those years to raise it up. Well, now we're slowly working to bring it down. We could go faster, but as you'll learn from these talks, municipality is at the mercy of higher-ups. And nowhere is that more evident than in our new project, the battery storage system. Now, you just heard Mr. Lindensky talk about the battery project. This project is one of the first in our state. If it all works well, the town, I've been told, can save hundreds of thousands of dollars. And you're probably thinking, hey, maybe this could lower our electric rates, and you would be perfectly right in thinking that way, but... We asked this question. Given the average number of homes on a street, say seven, how many electric charging stations could be installed? The answer is two. That's a problem. Remember I said when municipalities are at the mercy of the higher-ups? Well, the higher-ups have decided that the state and the country are moving to renewable energy sources and electric cars. But apparently, nobody ever bothered to think of the practical aspects of this move, forgetting about how you're going to produce so much more electricity, because if we're all going to have electric cars, the electric grid is going to have to be upgraded. And it's going to have to be upgraded because more people are going to be using the electric. Now, as I understand it, you can plug your electric car into a wall socket, and it will slowly take hours and hours, and it will recharge. To do it relatively quickly, you need special equipment, equipment that can move the electricity more quickly, and to do that, you need upgraded electric wires on the poles. That is going to cost millions. Guess where all the battery-saving money is going to be going? And it's not just us. PSE&amp;G, Jersey Central Power and Light have to do the same thing. And on top of all this, sustainable energy production is expensive. Those solar cells that you see on the non-South River-owned telephone poles that are out there, that's not because PSE&amp;G and JCPL wanted them. That's because the higher-ups ordered them to do something green. Being green is nice. It's also expensive. So, and you people probably already know this, because if you read any news articles about this, plan to spend more on electricity in the future. But at this point, we're not going to spend money that we don't have. It'll take about a year to figure out our savings and how much money we save, which means next year, we'll decide how we can put money aside to restringing the grid. In the meantime, our electric utility will be taken care of. We will continue to prune trees and upgrade equipment. We're fortunate to have our own electric utility. And if you don't think so, just ask our neighboring towns when they got their electricity restored 10 years ago. That's when Hurricane Sandy hit. Remember that? Hard to imagine, 10 years ago. 90 to 95% of our town had electricity restored within 72 hours. Think about it. Okay? So, maybe next time I'll talk about our water and what we're doing with that. But now, let's go on to public comment. You can come forward. Please give your name and address. You'll have 10 minutes. You can ask questions, make comments on topics concerning the borough. On first call, second call?
We're going to say no. Do I face you?
Yes.
Emily Grasso, 13 Darrell Street. I am on the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, and I want to come to some meetings and give you some environmental tips. And actually, this one isn't going to cost you anything. I'll tell you a little short story. So for years, I bought these. I bought BG Water. And you know why I like it? Because the bottle is square, and I can hold on to it better. So I would buy these and take them to work, and I would, I would reuse them maybe three or four times, and then I would chuck it. Well, I decided, well, maybe I should go to this. This is a bottle I've had for years that I use at a camp that I work at in the summer. So I was like, well, we're saving plastic. It's not costing me as much. I do miss my square bottles, I have to admit. They hold a little more than this, but my, I want to urge our residents to think about ditching plastic water bottles for something that you can reuse. It just has to become a habit. Like, you know, like I said, I was just in the habit of buying these, but now I'm in the habit of using this every day, and I think I'm saving a lot of plastic. I have one more tip.
Please. I'll show my Suez bottle here.
All right, so we are going to be at South River Day. So, everybody's got these. These are mugs that sit in your cabinet and go nowhere. And you probably only use about 50% of your mugs. So I have a Harry Potter mug that somebody gave my daughter. She doesn't drink coffee. She doesn't drink tea. Never uses it. And I have this other, this one's very cool, actually, but it has metal on it, so you can't microwave it. So what we're going to do is we're going to plant flowers in here. And for anybody who wants to pick up a Harry Potter mug with a pretty flower and this nice E mug with a pretty flower can come by our table at South River Day. And I also want to comment on the parade really quick. So thanks, everybody, for coming out to the parade. There were a lot of people. I also noticed a lot of people standing under the shade trees, because it was a hot day, and people were just like packed under the shade trees. So I just want to put my plug in for saving, if we can, saving shade trees in town and also planting more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please?
Hi, Lisa Byrne, 11 Basset Place. I just have a comment, and probably age is probably better. Solterra. This week was horrendous. We got Nixal saying they're not coming for Thursdays pickup, but they're out Saturday, because they don't have people. Friday, those people, which is us, they're picking them up Saturday, because they don't have people. I mean, being with Solterra, my concern is, we have a contract with this company who lately has a really big problem getting people to work for them. Every two weeks, is constantly, we're not getting picked up again. We're not getting picked up again. And when they do come, they can't finish the entire route. I don't know what the town can do about that. We need to look at the contract and what kind of fines or something, because I have garbage and stuff blowing down the street, not being picked up at all.
It's amazing how the wind always seems to blow, and storms come in on Thursdays of recycling days, so.
It's becoming a theme with them. For the last two months, almost every recycling pickup, there's an issue.
I understand something is going to be done with Solterra, so we will see.
We're paying them for service that we're not getting. I agree. And I end up with like five or six big blue bins of recycling that at some point will eventually get picked up.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Richard Byrne, 11 Basset Place. If I'm not mistaken, isn't our contract with the Middlesex County Utilities Authority and not directly with Solterra? So should we just show up at the commissioners' meetings and complain to them? Well, in addition to complaining.
But aren't they the only ones that bid on that job?
All right, so with that. So there are a couple of things on the police deputy chief ordinance that I object to, that were said. One is that the chair of the Public Safety Committee isn't an expert in police operations, and it is an assumption in law, in the Constitution of New Jersey, that every one of you is first and foremost a layperson and not expected to be experts in these things. We have a couple of firemen. We have a lawyer. We have a sales associate, business owners, hair expert, retired people. But you're not expected to be expert. You hire a long-tenured police chief to be your expert to advise you in these matters, right? So I object to that, like, you know, it assumes the wrong things. And the second thing is that there was a suggestion that this is some sort of political thing. And I was a police dispatcher with the Edison Township Police Department from '87 to '89, and I think 156 of the 160 police officers at the time were card-carrying, dues-paying members of the Edison Democratic Organization, because you had to be, to get the job, to keep the job, to get promoted. And to my knowledge, South River doesn't work that way, at least here. I mean, today. I don't know if Edison does now, but back then, how many cars you bought from Borough Motors counted, you know, because the mayor owned Borough Motors. So that's what I'd say about that. With respect to the transportation alternative conversion of abandoned and unused railroad rightaways, I remember part of the discussion being that as laid out right now, it's just short of a mile long, and there was objections to it being accessible from either end and having an emergency in the middle. But I, in the intervening time, looked at the tax map, and there's the public rightaway for Levinson, Armstrong, Augusta Street, Catherine Street. It ends well before, but the public rightaway runs all the way to that railroad rightaway. So we conceivably could, as part of the plan, put walking paths along the ends of the street rightaways and provide center, multiple center access for emergency response to an event, a medical event or crime event or something like that. So it, that objection is overcomeable with, you know, the way the streets are laid out. So, and I would wholeheartedly love a walking path where I could walk from Public Works all the way up to, well, I mean, you'd have to stop at the railroad track, the bridge going across, and then go around. But that was Joe Highland's vision for a end-to-end walking path along the river with the railroad rightways. There was a question that I've seen on Facebook about the electric battery storage project, and I think the answer is no, but I said I'd come and ask. So, if we were to lose power from PSENG on the mains, would the battery storage system be able to supply the borough's electricity? And I think the answer is no. It's just a
It's not designed for that right now.
Lower management, and what was the term you used? Peak shaving.
Peak shaving.
That, well, it saves money two ways.
Right.
They buy low and sell at a discount, and then the peak shaving cuts the peak rate next year, you know, when the top six days. I understand how it works, I'm not good at explaining it, though.
Nobody is.
The Blue Acres. So, I happened to meet State Senator Ed Durr, the guy who defeated Steve Sweetie, and he's a member of the Environment Committee. And one of the things I was going to raise with him, because he said, "Contact me for anything," even though I don't live in his district, was the problems with Blue Acres lots, and, you know, like, we want to put rain gardens in some of them, which
Or plant trees.
Rain gardens absorb three to four times the amount of rainwater that a grass lawn would, you know, and the problem is, you can't affix anything to the ground. And, you know, this guy is not encumbered by being a politician or a lawyer, or, so, you know, he might be a good way to get innovative ideas to, for positive change in this arena. So, I'll try and contact him and see if we can get some common sense added to the Blue Acres law, so. All right?
There'd be a change. Is there anyone else on first call, second call, third call?
Make a motion to close public?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mrs. Ballas to close public portion. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. There are no mayoral appointments, so we go down to consent resolutions. I understand number one-seventy-six is to be read separately.
Number one-seventy-one.
And one-seventy-six.
And one-seventy-six.
One-seventy-six, we just have that minor amendment.
Right. Right.
And one-seventy-one.
And one-seventy-one is going to be read separately? Okay. Those two, Madam Clerk?
Oh, one quick question for one-sixty-nine before we read it. I felt like I saw a, I'm sorry, a name misspelled. Does that matter, legal?
Can we, no, can we accurately identify who it is? Let me look.
I mean, I didn't, I should have asked Mr. Olivera, but I was assuming the, they're minors, I don't know if I want to read their name out loud. One of them, the last name is Marie, and I don't think that's actually that kid's last name.
That's a minor change.
Okay.
It's okay.
Just want to make sure that doesn't delay it.
We get the right, we can correct.
I did ask you that.
But she asked the same question, but the email had that exact.
Okay.
I put it on there.
I just, I think I know who it is, and I don't, that's why I was
Yeah, we can follow up. What's on there is what was in the email.
Anyone else? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero-one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and controversial, non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it and it is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. One-sixty-seven, authorizing conditional appointment of Daniel Osziello Jr. as police officer. One-sixty-eight, appointing Ian Giron as summer help to Department of Public Works. One-sixty-nine, authorizing appointment of recreation slash administration positions. One-seventy, authorizing insertion of special item of revenue in twenty-twenty-two budget. One-seventy-one, granting renewal to ABC licenses.
That will be read separately.
Okay. One-seventy-two, appointing a hearing officer on behalf of the Public Safety Committee. One-seventy-three, authorize collector of utility revenue to make certain refunds. One-seventy-four, authorizing emergency repair of fire department ladder tower and approved contract award to Campbell Supply Company in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven-hundred-fifty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. One-seventy-five, authorizing renewal of prescription plan coverage with Bennett Card Services. One-seventy-seven, authorize the bills and claims list.
Your pleasure on the resolutions. Resolution has been moved by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Seola. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Resolution one-seventy-one, as the consent resolutions have been adopted.
Would you like me to read it in full or just the title?
Well, you begin reading it, and then a motion is made to waive the full reading.
Resolution granting renewal to plenary, retail, consumption, and club licenses in the borough of South River for the period July first, twenty-twenty-two to June
Make a motion waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. This is for a period of July first, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, because that part got slightly cut off.
Yes. Mayor, I ask to have this read separately. I'd like to have liquor license number one-two-two-three-dash-three-three-dash-zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-zero-seven
I believe that that has to be, well, the resolution hasn't been made yet.
No, we could
Move the resolution, then move for an amendment?
Move for the amendment. We could do it that way.
All right, then. May I have the resolution moved?
Move the resolution.
Resolution has been moved by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Olivera. I believe that there is going to be a motion by Mr. Seola to amend, to remove the ending in oh-oh-eight, oh-oh-seven.
Oh-oh-seven.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ballas. Voting on the amendment, is there any discussion? Then voting on that amendment, we will first vote on that. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Okay. The resolution has been amended. We will now vote on the amendment, excuse me, on the amended resolution. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
The amended resolution has been adopted. Moving on to one-seventy-six.
Authorizing execution of a park improvement agreement with New Jersey Softball Cricket League for Pacers Fields.
Is there a motion to waive the full reading?
Motion to waive the full reading.
Motion by Mr. Seola to waive the full reading, seconded by Mr. Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay, this is going to be amended, so.
Mr. Mayor, it's just a phrase will be added into the first paragraph after "now therefore be it resolved," and the phrase is "subject to the confirmation there are no environmental constraints on the property."
An engineering approval?
That includes the engineering.
Okay, very good. As amended, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Gertensky?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just, as I mentioned, I just wanted to say, being the liaison to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, I just wanted to know what everybody's thoughts was, was on this adding that if a tree is cut down, that it be replaced? Or maybe a contribution to the Shade Tree Fund?
I don't know if you can do that. Doesn't the ordinance say that in lieu of, I think we just passed it not too long ago, in lieu of cutting down a tree, you can donate money to a park?
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
To the Shade Tree Fund.
It's already in there.
Not to Shade Tree, to Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
For parks improvement. I don't know if Shade Tree was on there. Do you remember? I think this past
I do not believe that Parks and Rec
No, it wouldn't be Parks and Rec if you cut down a tree.
If the borough, it's a borough piece of property, if the borough cuts down a tree in Parks and Rec, they don't have to replace it.
No, no, but in the ordinance that we passed, if someone cut down a tree, they can either replace the tree, or they can do a park improvement.
I believe that ordinance is for developers and not for this type of a situation.
We can certainly ask.
You can.
Thank you.
By all means, we shall. If there's nothing else, roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
The ordinance has amended, excuse me, the resolution has amended, has been adopted. We finished new business, we come now finally to governing body comments. I'll start at the opposite end, Councilwoman Ballas.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'd like to congratulate the South River class of twenty-twenty-two. They will be graduating next week. Just be safe, be careful. It's been a long time since many of us graduated from that high school, and I hope you go on to do what you want to do in life. And the other thing, Happy Father's Day to everyone. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Seola.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, as the mayor had brought up about the new electric vehicles, the fire department had a classroom drill with a major car manufacturer on the EVs, and the batteries are extremely dangerous. In the event of a fire, they basically explode and go into different directions. It takes thousands and thousands of gallons to put the fire out. Once the fire is out and the vehicle is towed to a salvage yard, it cannot be placed within seventy-five feet of any other vehicle or building, because the batteries reignite themselves again. Very dangerous. We had a North Jersey resident that was charging his children's scooters in the basement, and the batteries caught fire and burnt the house down. Another motor vehicle accident, the person was trapped in the car, and the batteries ignited. So, again, emergency, electric vehicles, be extremely careful when charging. Make sure they're charged outside, away from the building, just in event something does happen. And with that, Happy Father's Day to everybody, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera.
Just want to thank the South River Fire Department and the Police Department. Couple of weeks ago at my house, I had my smoke alarms going off nonstop for carbon monoxide. Chief Smith, thank you for coming out. But that night, I learned something new, that apparently there has been a major recall on fire alarms. So, please make sure that you are checking to see if you are one of the not-so-fortunate residents that had a recall. Look forward to seeing everyone Saturday at South River Day. It should be a ton of fun. Hopefully, we have good weather. I also want to congratulate Donna, the Human Relations Committee, and most importantly, the South River Portuguese Club. They did an excellent job on Saturday, celebrating the Portuguese heritage. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gertensky.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to get, thank the police, fire, Robert Wood Johnson, and especially our DPW workers for all the work that they do for us, and to keep us safe and clean and everything else. Thanks to all the Memorial Day participants and everything, too. It was a nice turnout and everything, as far as the parade goes. Also, I'd like to thank anybody for the remembrances that we had at the cemeteries, for our past service members, and also the Portuguese flag raising was very well attended, and it was a nice affair. And that's pretty much it. Thank you, and have a Happy Father's Day this weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Gertensky. Mrs. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start, I did have one last question. I don't know who could answer to me. Since the school year is ending, I know we, last year and the past few years, we had money in the budget for summer interns. Are we doing that this year?
No, we're not. Didn't have time this year. We were hiring people, we had different other issues in the borough. We are not doing it. We're trying to get a returning person with some knowledge, but he doesn't seem to want to come back.
Okay, but did we have the money in the budget this year for summer interns? Okay. I ask because, you know, the school's ending, kids are always looking for summer jobs. What better than assist us here at the borough when we need it? I thought we were going to do that again, but I guess not. I just want to thank the Culture, Arts, and Heritage Commission for a very well-attended Memorial Day Parade. Sorry, I could not be there, but I did watch, and it was, it was fun to see everybody out there again. The flag raising from the Human Relations Commission was very well attended, and I want to thank the consulate of Portugal who did attend, Dr. Monteiruch. He said something in his speech that I didn't know. Portugal is made up of ten million residents and five million immigrants throughout the world. It's actually a number I didn't know. I knew we were many, but not that many. I, as some of you know, am first-generation American. My father came from Portugal for the American dream. He was a police officer in Portugal and came to America to start off as a construction worker. But we all do things for our family, and I'm grateful that he did, because I wouldn't be here today. And I just want to thank them and everybody who came out for that. It was a fun event. Mr. Mayor, I'm pleasant to hear that you had some type of speech for us today. I want to say, I hope going green isn't as bad as you think it will be in the future. I know my eleven-year-old is very conscious about water bottles and straws. I have a million reusable straws at home, because we need to save the turtles. And that's what kids are thinking about now. They're thinking about their future and the trees that are out there, and how much plastic we use, and how to become more efficient by saving on, you know, gas and going electric. So, I hope we don't always look at it as a negative thing. It's a part of my future. I know I, hopefully, I have another sixty years here on this world, and my kids and their kids, so I hope we don't look so negatively at going green and doing the easy things like the Environmental Shade Tree Commission is coming up with at South River Day. So, I hope everybody stops over there and gets some fun facts that they'll have at their table. Other than that, I want to wish everybody a Happy Father's Day. I want to say, as I'm saying that, my husband has texted me an apology, because he bought his daughter's two new bikes for the summer, so weather's getting warm, everybody's going to be out bike riding. Just want everybody to be safe where their Just want everybody to be safe, wear their helmets. And I did want to thank the Police Department for being able to fundraise and have those bikes to give out for the kids they, they did at the school. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just because questions are asked does not mean that there's negativity. I don't think there's anyone who is in favor of pollution, because that's the way that I look at it. When, who was it? Mayor, mispronounced the name, Silvio Adio, came here visiting. He asked me about climate change. I approach climate change from the idea that I'm not in favor of pollution, and I wind up in the same place. When you see those pictures of the ocean just filled with plastics, nobody's in favor of that. Yes, we'd all love to drive electric cars. They don't pollute. That's a good idea. But you have to be practical and ask questions. How are you going to produce the electricity? Our grid is not able to handle all the electric cars, and they're coming at us within a matter of, what, twenty years? We better be ready for it, and we have to start now. And so it's going to cost us. And that's what you should need, you need to know that. This is not going to be something that's going to be simple. And it's going to be a lot of starts and stops. I mean, look at what happened in Texas. They had the, all those big windmills, and they had a big snowstorm, and guess what happened? They all froze. And poof, no electricity in the middle of a snowstorm. You've got to have, be able to think about this. And it doesn't seem as though the people, the higher-ups, as I call them, are doing that. So somebody has to ask questions. I mean, right now, I understand in the New York Legislature, the environmentalists are upset because the legislature is not pushing forward a certain green bill that they wanted. But I think what's happening is they're beginning to ask questions again. Where are we getting the power? If we're all going to electric and we're already having brownouts, what are we going to do in the future? And that's what we have to be prepared for. And actually, just to touch base on something else, the Consulate General, I'm very impressed, actually, actual Consulate General came. I took issue with him, talking about, well, there's ten million in Portugal, five million outside of Portugal. Yes, but that does not take into account everybody who is descendant from those immigrants. There's many, many other Portuguese. In fact, there are so many that Portuguese is the fifth-largest language on earth, all from that little country there. So it's quite dynamic, and it's quite a good place, and we also had a lot of fun there raising the flag. Worked out nicely, as we also did on the fishing derby. And by the way, that Portuguese flag raising, everybody's invited. You don't have to be Portuguese to come. You can come out on any of the flag raisings. Likewise, the fishing derby. You don't have to go fish. I don't go fishing. We had, what was it, eighty people sign up? I mean, the place, wow, what a crowd. And again, having fun. I don't know who had more fun, the kids or the adults? Getting out there, and, oh my goodness, this one little girl came, and I guess it was her sister, she caught a fish! My hand is larger than this little girl's two hands together for which that fish was in, but she had caught that fish. A minnow? I don't know, but she was proud of it, and they duefully weighed it. So you had fun. That was the whole thing about it. And that's why these things are important, to get the, get everybody together. That's why I love the Memorial Day Parade, because South River comes together. It's a little piece of Americana where we can all get together. And this one was very good, so, you know, three cheers to cultural arts for putting it all together. It was a great time. Good time was had by all. A chance for the town to come together. Something else that I attended was the League of Historical Society. South River got to host this statewide organization on May the twenty-eighth, and very well-attended for, you know, the weekend as it was. We hosted, and people were very impressed, so we're grateful for that, and we thank South River Day is coming up. After that, you can go to Saint Peter and Paul Spaghetti Dinner. That's also afterwards. Paper shredding event on the twenty-fifth, a little closer, June fourteenth, tomorrow. Happy Flag Day. Happy Fourth of July. Our next meeting will be July the eleventh. To the graduates of South River High, you know, on Facebook, you know you're from South River, a lot of nostalgia there. It was good to see Joe Theismann here in town. Again, Drew came by. Nice to see them coming here. Best wishes to our graduating class. Again, as Mrs. Mara said, be careful. Kids will be playing outside, and they don't watch where the cars are coming. Be careful. I missed the date, but shout out to Mrs. Coyle, Donna Ballas's mother. Happy birthday, and Happy Father's Day to everybody who's taking care of children. It is not an easy thing to do, this, this world that we live in, but Happy Father's Day to all of you. Our next meeting, July eleventh. We will see you then. If there's anything else to come before us, we can adjourn. May I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. We stand adjourned.